Eleven point three. I am calling this board.
Recording in progress.
I'm calling this board of trustees, regular month beginning October twenty four eleven twenty two A M. In order, I'm calling this to order, please. Agenda number one, that's eleven what, twenty nine? Twenty two, okay. Roll call, please. Trustee Abelak is here.
Yeah.
Trustor Kiza.
Here.
Trustee Tana Tung is here. Trustee Lu Lu in attendance via Zoom. She's still off island on the record. And yours truly, Theo Dallas. We have a call, ladies and gentlemen. Uh approval of the minutes of September nineteen, this was sent to you through email. Did you guys go through it?
Yes, I did.
I saw some of you said, yes, okay, no, okay. Can I have a motion?
I know we approve our minutes of September nineteen.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by uh Trustee Yaritisa. Uh move and seconded with Trustor Kiza. Any uh any any discussion? Can I get a vote, please?
Hi.
Trustee Lu, can you hear us?
Hi.
Thank you. We have a way, we have a. Uh ladies and gentlemen, we have this perhaps this. Calendar, United Nations, take it away, CEO.
Yes, good morning, everyone. So, United Nations Week started yesterday, October twenty three to twenty seven. It's a one week um celebration of United Nations. It's something different that we've been doing as before. The previous years, we only do it one day. It's more of a performance from different countries.
They have all the different costumes.
Costumes and everything. But this year, it's more incorporated in their content areas. But each grade level choose their own country. So yesterday, the theme is amazing race. So there's a game for every country, on every grade level or class visits every room or every country. Play the day a day.
Oh wow.
Today is the live museum, so you're um you're here. I encourage you to attend some of the countries.
Live what?
Live museum. So they um every class or every grade level have to show something from social studies, science, their national.
Interesting.
And then they showcase the um their foods, their delicacies, but it's very informative. I just finished uh C G right now. Um there's a plan for every day.
Yeah.
Um on Thursday is the United Nations um pageant or parade. So they can show their customs and their weight levels. And then the last, they travel. So you you don't wander and you see classes walking around with their passports. So they have their passports with them and every country they visit, they get. And then they have.
That's so nice.
If they lose their if they lose their passport, then they won't be allowed. They will be sent to the embassy of the admin office. They will be deported. And then they will get another.
That's very nice. Any customs inspection?
It does reality.
And then also get. That's very nice.
The offices, some country that we chose is Korea.
That's why I said I saw you.
Ah. Even the admin office and S S O, the students support office. Uh they have to hang on to that passport the whole week because on Friday, which is the last day, they will use it as their pass um to claim their ice cream. We have donations from different um vendors for their ice cream so that they can um claim it on the last day.
With reward system, man. Very nice. I'm just so happy that you kind of like expand the 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 United Nations. Because I know every year what what I saw, then we're just parading their costumes and 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 now expanding it to knowing really how is the world, the world of of what it is really when you have to be on different countries, right? Requiring pieces and and each other. That's very nice.
You start learning as they go around.
Yeah.
It's reality, the way.
Yeah. And then of course.
The whole week, um this every class, like they have to incorporate it in their science content, in their social studies. So it's not just one. And this is a very nice way for where the students maybe learn and feel that they're going around the world with that passport. And I have to give credit to Ms. Maria, our assistant first.
Yeah.
Thought of the idea and hostage and the whole school is very excited for it because it's
They felt like it's really.
Collaboration.
And and they're learning the different countries.
That's actual O J E.
Yes, yes.
So that's that's still not. So there's it's still ongoing until Friday.
It's still ongoing. Today is the second day, it's live museum. So even yesterday for the games, right? I went to one country, they have this game from Thailand where they have to pick the the duck. And then there's Philippines, um they feature the national game, Tumbang Pris. So their kids experience how to play. What is Tumbang Pris? So there's cans and then they use their slippers to knock down.
Yeah. You know, in the Philippines, we don't have any any not not nothing really to play with. So you have like cans of like milk cans, empty milk cans that you will have to line up. You have probably one or three or more of those. And then you use your slippers or whatever, whatever you have on your feet to knock it down. And then you don't have to do it like that. It's almost like, what is it, the frisbee kind of?
Yeah.
But you but you use your 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 slippers or your your wooden slipper, the buck, yeah, right? So how we grow up that way? I don't think Alex experienced that because he didn't. But I experienced that and I think uh the CEO experiences as well. But that's the way we do that, right? I I really, those are very nice.
It's an actual experience. Education.
Yeah, yeah. Very competitive, right?
Better way to understand the practices and have respect for different cultures.
Yeah, with different cultures, right?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Very nice.
Introduction to the United Nations.
Yes.
Yes.
So everyone's waiting for the day, Friday, because they have their ice cream and.
Okay, uh, trustees, any question on the calendar for United Nations? Uh otherwise, we can move on the unfinished business. Go ahead, CEO.
Yes.
This continues.
So for the emergency funds, A R Ps, um E S F two is um closed. Um yes, we were able to submit um the rollover and they allowed us. And I've been in contact with Mr. Neil, who's the one who's um from G D O E in the internal audit or the E S F two and A R P team. Um he is, he's informed me that somehow he wa- he's requested for that amount of money, one dollar to a dollar, to make sure that we will roll over and give.
So it's closed.
Yes, but to roll over the balances.
That's that's.
So we didn't even.
We didn't lose the money. We're still gonna be.
So the E S F money was rolled to the A R P?
So that's the request that he's going, that they're going to do, just because it's not on our end.
Yeah, yeah.
Because when the during the transition, we entered everything, the requisitions.
Yeah, I do S F.
It's it's the G D O E that just.
Was taken.
And was taken too long. So it's not our fault because it was already there.
Yeah. Well, the important thing is those are in comfort. And those, in other words, those points are spoken for. So you don't have to to make sure that, you know, it just the 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 day, the day, the commit of G D O E, who is who is supposed to be the procurement office, we seek the E S F A R.
Yeah.
So all in all, according to this usual term, compliance.
Yeah.
Compliance.
I think compliant.
And yes, we are.
We are.
Yeah.
The dates were sweet for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because these are all subject to this single audit, you know, which is always what we're trying to make sure that all the all all the numbers and all the amount are all uh logged in. But we we have very good from the start that we started getting the A R P and the E S F money, they've always tracked down every single meeting and recording. And check and balance on on procurement and how the how the how all the items that were bought and those those monies are also kept also, are recorded. To actually.
Actually, I would like to share with you that Mr. Neil and Mrs. Salini Higa, they're the um the the supervisor, I guess, the program coordinator, who oversees the audit of E S F two and A R P. Um we have a very good working relationship with them and they're always happy. As they say that if it's G A C S, we know you want in there everything. And they would even give our
Sample.
Senator like recommend other uh other schools to ask, how do you wanna use it? With your summer call G A C S because they, if you wanna see how they are called G A C S.
Some learning.
Thank you again, of course.
Some learning.
And uh Ms. Jamie for the.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, the fiscal and the admin side, you guys.
Good for Jamie. Thank you, Jamie.
Very good.
Thank you, Jane. Good job.
So um A R P, then um Ms. Jamie, you have just a summary report of how much we still have to extend the work. It's still, I believe, we just.
So. So for A R P, this doesn't include the the rollover balance from E S F two, but right now we do have two point nine million left to spend. So including the E S F two, that would push us that almost, almost the four million. So um during the during the time, the fiscal year twenty twenty three, G D O E was not entertaining any A R P requisitions at all because they wanted to focus on expanding the E S F two balance before they before focusing on A R P. So um like Ms. Ann reported, it closed already S E S F two. We can't do any more purch- purchase orders as as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. So moving forward now will be all all A R P requisitions, but all the purchase orders for E S F two we have until December thirty first to fulfill, to close out those purchase orders.
So.
So um I have a comment, a question. What are your plans then, uh Mrs. Santiago, to expand all that money? Do you have like, like a plan to make sure that we spend as much of that money to support teaching and learning?
Yes, um um the expenses or the allocations is pretty much set. We cannot go transfer because it already has been approved. Although the amount is very huge, there's only few items under those um under that four million or um total expend, total budget. So it's a matter of just um when we receive the goal from G D O E, um Ms. Jamie has to, and a- actually she can't enter anything anymore. So the the old, the part that we have to submit is just to help them with the quotations and the um dons and the equa- um determination of need. Those are just the forms that we need to submit to E S F two team, I mean the A R P team, and they'll be the ones. So in terms of the plan, how to spend it, we cannot deviate from it because it has already been approved. It's just a matter of P O E. And cutting everything, and cutting the checks, approving the procurement processes, all there. So we just have to be patient and wait.
Yeah, but but uh I think Trustee's question is, are those encumbrances uh pertains to anything on education and all those.
Yes, because there it's a guideline. You have to make sure A R P is specifically to bridge instructional gap.
Very good.
So everything that was approved is already set and only to um bridge the instructional gap.
Very good. Very good.
Um after school care.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um or after school um summer program.
Yes, yes.
Um we actually use that after school already for the third and fourth.
And and I I I think for the for 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 just knowing the number, those are the big chunk of where those monies are gonna go. So that definitely would help uh in in terms of like.
Yes.
Those are so many.
Can can some of that that money that has not been expended be used to support um professional development? I am thinking that maybe some of the key people from the National Charter School might be brought in and have a charter school conference on Guam. Invite all of the charter schools. Because I believe that there are some commonalities in some of the challenges that the charter schools are experiencing. Uh I I like to be able to see that happen um so we don't lose the money. But you know, I think that we communicate with the National Charter School. There and I and I give, I I read something that they're changing their name soon. Uh anyway, if we if we can get the support um as a resource with the National Charter School, I think that would be awesome. I really do.
Benefit all.
The initial the initial operation of G A C S, we did brought somebody from the national, and that really helped us even more.
Yeah.
So I I just want to make sure that you did not have, you still have funding to uh reprogram uh to what to what Trustee Lu would like. Because it does incorporate certain ways, and that's already been approved for for uh procurement. I I just want to make sure that you really have enough money to make sure that 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 gets uh that gets a program for.
May I ask?
For what Trustee is is requesting.
If you can give us post it as to what she's asking.
Yes. Um definitely, just to answer the first question of this, yes, on A R P, there's a lot meant for professional development. But just like what Ms. uh um Madame Fay said, they're allotted for specific already and mainly for social and emotional. Because again, it relates to um COVID. Now, the objectives has to be uh must be followed on the purposing and the allocation of each fund. Um but definitely, I can ask, and if there's overage from other funding, that's when I can ask and request and see if can they reallocate or reprogram.
Yeah. I think the reprogramming is very important. Just make sure identify uh by the cost and everything else, maybe could be seen a little bit more of funding. Because it's still related to a professional development. That is, this will be the the scope of what uh Trustee Lu is asking.
I know for a fact though that um when it comes to off-island training or P V's like that, um the cost that they cover usually is our staff, you said, not other.
Just yeah, pretty damn.
Yes, yes, yes.
So but again, there's no army nasty in trying. So I'll uh let you know what um how I'll involve about it. And maybe if not under A R P, I can try under consolidated grant.
Ms. Ann, can I also add to? I just wanted to add to what Ms. Ann was saying and also to from Ms. Liu's question. So with A R P, how Ms. Ann was saying that, so in E S F two, we uh we as end users were the ones that inputted the requisitions. But starting now with A R P, it will be G D O E to enter the requisition. So it's just our responsibility to let to provide the documentation and the quotes. Um and so that there are three, just like E S F two, there are three uh categories in the budget for A R P, the equipment, supplies, and contractual. So a lot of the equipment and supplies, it focuses, it there's there's the, we have budgets for different items such as um microscopes, um anything to support instructional learning, musical equipment, P E equipment includes um it computers. And then also, we have a budget for instructional supplies um for for specific curriculum activities, toolkits, games, things like that. Um and then also, we have a technology peripheral budget. And then, so those are for equipment and supplies. Those are just some of the budget categories that we have that supports it the the teachers in the classroom, supports instructional learning, the academic side. And then also, we still, of course, have the custodial supplies and then the the P P Es for to address the safety concerns. Um and then for contractual, for the contractual budget, we do have the budget for professional development, but like Ms. Ann was saying, because A R P is um it's a COVID, it's a COVID grant. So the professional development gears a lot towards social and emotional learning. But as far as other, like focusing on the on the academic side, like what Ms. Ann was saying was is that could be under consolidated grant. But now that we're focusing on A R P, this is where we can work with the team to see if maybe we can work those other types of professional development or whatever it is, if we can ask for them to to put it in the budget, just like Ms. Ann asked to convert the the busing budget in the contractual under A R P to the premium pay for the five thousand for the employees.
Good. Any question, Trustee? Trustee Lu?
Yeah, no, the my my point is in in making that suggestion was that, you know, not all the teachers are fortunate to go off island and learn. Uh so it is much more cost effective to bring people in. And really, I think it would be great for all the charter schools on Guam to get together and and go through this conference. Like, I personally would like to see that.
Can can we go back to the record at one point in time? We did brought somebody from the charter school. Uh we hosted them and we had we had them, we had her stay in in a hotel, did a a P O sessions here with our teachers. So uh that's.
But by these areas, is it Nifty or Char- uh?
Nifty.
Fifty.
It was fifty.
Oh, Nifty, yes. So Nifty is under local. And then just.
Is it not the Nifty or the National Charter School? And the S C S? Isn't under the, uh we we brought somebody from Nifty, not the S C S?
Yeah. But for the charter school, um um it was funded locally. So the first year was um the board, myself, went to the charter school conference. That was funded locally with this.
Yeah, yeah.
The second year, which is last year, I was able to request and put it under consolidated grant. So we only have
Two representatives.
Two representatives from um G A C S.
But according to what she wants to bring them. Who's the creator?
Which we will try, try.
It's the first time in Guam that they have a national conference.
Under, under our initiative.
A national conference, I suppose, the first time.
No, it's always uh um there's always off-island.
No, but here in Guam, it will.
Yeah, that will be the first one.
That will be the first if we are able.
If we're able to pull this, that that will be the first ever.
That's just due in nature.
Yeah.
And I can coordinate, just like what Ms. said, like I can coordinate the other charter schools and see if they're willing to.
Yeah, I want them to know that we're interested. Yeah.
Get their input. They, maybe I can um coordinate with them and then if they're willing to use some of their funding under consolidated grant and say it's.
But they're they're the cost.
Yeah. They're the cost of that instead of us sending them maybe.
Do we have subscription uh rate with the S C S? Do we have to pay our membership?
No, there's no membership fee. It's only the conference registration fee and my other.
Cause you 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 know, in in some of the national audit sessions like that, you should be prescribed a fee. So you're you're on the loop on anything that's happening, so. But the service is sometimes, most of you don't get any uh any S C S uh. I have to open up my email and see what's going on. So. So any any anyone question, Trustee Lu? Are we are we clear? She's she's not here yet.
Yes, 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 yes.
Oh, okay, no question. Okay. So, about the other trustees.
No, that's a good idea. Just it would benefit a lot of the charter school.
Yeah.
Teachers.
That's true.
Yes. So for the consolidated grant, we um the award notification and the accountability workshop uh um occurred on October fourteen, twenty twenty three, just last Friday. It was a Friday when we were invited. We were supposed to be on, I think, October eleven or ten that because of the IT launch. Um they moved it to October fourteen. So I was able to go to G D O E, sign all the assurances. So we can start with a new budget for consolidated data or the fiscal. Um we have been using or maximizing and putting in mostly everything. Um using the consolidated grant, so we're gonna do the same thing. Um just like sending our staff to the conferences, our counselors. Uh we got our work keys from from work key payment from C G, anything about the students. That's um the college career readiness program, that project, they're supporting it. Um we have supplies for the college fair and everything. So everything that we were able to acquire through consolidated grant in the last fiscal year, I'm going to um request for the same thing. And of course, include the recommendation of Ms. Jamie. That would be um.
I I'm just so happy that that's a really good relationship that we've solidified. Who's having the consulting?
Right now, for federal programs division, um the acting super uh the acting administrator is Ms. Christine Rosario.
Okay, Christine's been there, right? Like, I think she was like a deputy.
It's a different, I think she's from a different department. Ms. Janice is a charter sister. Oh.
That's my, that's my.
No. Yeah, Ms. Christine Rosario. So she's been very helpful. Um yeah, so she even approved uh moving some of the funds because for the Nifty, when we sent six of our staff or teachers to the Nifty conference under the consolidated grant, their tickets were uh were so high at the time that they would approve it. So they said we exceeded the budget for it, but I requested a new move other funds from C G and recover the costs because um it's not uh it's out of our control to have the tickets very expensive. And he approved it and they made a way. Christine is very nice. Um yeah, that's why we were able to send six of our staff.
Okay, any any uh just trustees, any question?
Under C G.
Under C G. Uh Trustee Lu, any?
No.
Any question? So we can move to uh the uh.
The student data on uh it's just uh Lu's request. This is the data that I would like to share with you in your packet. Um it's the average daily attendance of G A C S students from August fourteen, which is the first day all the way to September thirty. Um if you can share the slides on screen. Um so this is how we do it even in the annual report. But for this particular uh report, it only covers our attendance per grade level from August fourteen to September thirty.
I don't have that report. I don't have that information.
Yeah, so it's on the screen, ma'am. Do you see it? It's being shared.
There's an attendance.
Now, are you able to see it, Ms. Lu?
No.
On the screen? It's uh Mr. Jonah is sharing it right now on on the screen.
Uh maybe, maybe in the in the next reporting, if you could send it along with the minutes, that would be a big help. When you when you uh.
Agenda, yes. But the jet, um okay, we'll try, I'll try my best. Because we are trying to get the September thirty, but I can send you, Mr. Jonah, I sent you the email right earlier. They just were ready to miss it, so she can follow. But anyways, on the screen, Ms. Lu, um being shared on the screen by Mr. Jonah, but this is compared compared to our P V's record for the annual, for the school year last year in the annual re- report. Elementary is always the one who supports the question, uh eighty seven percent. Um is the daily attendance rate. Uh middle school is uh um eighty four percent, yes, and it's about the same as the high schoolers.
Very good. It on 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 any of the other schools that, you know, on on, let's look at the trend. Not the national and the local, local trend on attendance. Uh how are how are we bearing? Do we have?
There's a trend for the attendance of all at least public schools, right? It's even for G D O E. The trend is that during COVID and after. It's even for T V O, the trend is that during COVID and after COVID. Um the tendency would. Uh number one reason is also uh parents are not very comfortable in sending their students. If they're just having business, they already are staying. And you request that too because or they have to cover or come in with their mask. And um there's a flu going around the island of. So we've been getting excuse letters from parents sending to their home. Uh their kids staying home for more than. Because of that.
So I I would say the overall eighty four point sixty four is. It is a very good, it's a very good uh uh record for attendance after COVID.
And just the fact that we are able to monitor and keep track. Yes, the in the past years, our challenge in the administration side is. Um monitoring the attendance because teachers would have to input it on Red Web, your daily attendance. Um if they don't input it, there's no way for us to backtrack and go back to it. But we've been focusing on making sure that. First period, they have to enter it.
Very good.
And we did some minor um remedy on the on. On the administration side for teachers who are not present that day. So they are not able, their substitute teachers or whoever is covering for them. Instead of because they don't have access, it takes a while for them to go log into Red Web. Computer if they don't have, it's emergency. So the admin office has to print the attendance for that day for that home student. So that it comes in the package of the lessons. So they do it manually and then after that period. Someone brings it down straight to S S O to make sure that S S O is putting it. Because we don't want to give full access to everything just because reading book and attendance. Attendance uh records is solely, it's.
I think that's the beauty of Red Web. It's it's uh it's holistic and it's approach and really running a school. Uh it's got, which which remind me now, uh the the food program, are we able to utilize through it?
We haven't, but uh we are, um actually, Miss Maria will connect with our. Aunt Sandra for Red Web so that they can do a training with this lesson. Um from the conference of Red Web, I have gathered all the documentation. I have all the. I even have a certificate that I attended. Um even for childcare and.
Yes, because they they're they're expanding, right? So any updates that we need to do with Red Web since we're staying with Red Web, I think we should be able to. Just make sure that we are uh in sync with any updates that we have. Because it's it's very, it's very comprehensive, that's like utilization for a small, it covers almost everything.
We maximize the use of Red Web because um this is the number one beyond one that is being used by um. Simply because it allows you to track or receive push it. That's the only thing that we don't um we cannot use because we don't collect and we're not. Including after school, so even before when we have SARS. Um we collect from the parents, right? We charge a very minimal amount for the students and stay after school. But that wasn't inputted or we didn't use Red Web. It was just more of a manual approach.
Who else, who else is big train under Red Web? Are you the only one training under Red Web?
Uh Miss Maria.
Okay.
Um and Miss Collette, um the three of us went to the conference last summer. And then we trained almost like like it's actually improved now our.
I just have uh two questions, Madam Chair.
Miss Lu, um Mister E Black just has one question before.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you guys speak up a little bit louder?
Okay.
All right, all right, I will.
Thank you, thank you.
One thing that is really calling my attention is the differences between the kindergarten, the middle school and high school in comparison. It shows that the higher the grade, the lower the attendance is. And notice that on grade twelve. Is the main contributing factor in that lower high school. And that's where I have the question.
I I think that's both national and local.
Yeah.
Uh the higher grades, that's why I want to extract the the uh, that's why I asked, I asked Lucille ahead of time. What is the norm on the national and the local level? Because that 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 because she was explaining how it was high on the 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 little ones like the elementary. The the attendance, but when they when they got to the the higher. That that's why I said that eighty four sixty four, but eight, but but the the higher greater, a little bit more.
Especially the seniors and Miss Lu would know would understand because our seniors do technically, they come here. Based on classes or their credits. So uh they can come here on the second period because they have a second period, which is uh part of their credit. Uh they don't, technically, they don't even have to come here for homeroom and attendance. Where we monitor the attendance. Just, yes, Miss Lu, right? That's how 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 it is. But generally for our, I believe there's about thirty. Of our seniors, generally, most of them um are already half day. This year, that means they already. So they just have to be here for the three or the three classes in the morning. To make sure to complete.
Have though when I was in high school.
And this is perfect, that's why, that's why the. And this is also perfect because we tried to accommodate the schedule of the the master's schedule for the seniors. Because in line with our college interview readiness. So that on after their required classes in the morning, now they can be plugged into the community. The colleges where they have to go to. The required certificates that they need so that they will be college or. You say some of them like to join the military, right? So, right, Mister Chris Astama, our consultant for the college C C R for the college and uh career readiness program. Actually, he has the seniors mostly every day after their morning classes. He more, Miss Lu, it's your turn.
Okay, um I just have two questions. Question number one. Because I don't, I don't have the data with me. Is is the data on? Uh. Discipline indicating what teachers need help in classroom management? Because if the teacher is spending fifty percent of the time disciplining the student. The students are being shortchanged of learning. And the next part of that question is what support is being given to those teachers? To help them with classroom management?
Are you speaking in terms of attendance, ma'am?
No. Discipline, classroom. Referrals by classroom teachers on this on student and within the classroom.
So um we'll move, by the way, Miss Lu, just to let you know, Mister Jonah sent you by email the data, just so if you can.
Okay.
But we can move now to the referrals. So you have it. So just to answer your question, Miss Lu, yes, we do because we are using for our discipline, the P V I S. And um the Swiss program, Swiss program is.
It's coming up now.
Swiss program is actually monitoring the daily. O D Rs or the daily behavior referrals that are being issued by every teacher or even a um a support staff. So from the data, um every month, we do, like, just like, for example, the past P V. That we had covered well, um the data was presented. To the faculty and staff just to make sure that they have an idea of our, the trend of our discipline. So.
Before, as you continue, since I'm not an educator, can you explain to me what is P V I?
P V I, Positive Behavior Intervention System. So we use that every Thursday, we all our students have, and this is also under the consolidated brand. So we ask um P V I S coaches from G B O E to come here. Um give training lessons, which answers your question, Miss Lu.
We had last time.
Yes. To do uh.
You weren't here.
Active supervision, um training, not just for the fa- um the support staff, but also to the faculty. Um members to know how to catch and monitor, have that active supervision. Um this was done last school year, so the first, when we invited them, they did the training. For just the faculty, just so that it's more of a. And then the next month, we invited them back again just to read for the support staff. So these are training sessions that we are able to avail of under the consolidated brand. And that's part of the training and support that we give our teachers so that they won't. Spend so much time or they would have like strategies in classroom management. Another thing that we do or we offered last school year is the coaching. Um we have volunteers, community volunteers. So based on the recommendation of the principal and assistant principal of who. Which teachers need more of a like a. Guidance on classroom management, we have Mister Chris Astama who and Mister Tarbo that who work community. Volunteers that we paired our teachers who need support to them. Um that way, they don't feel that they're being represented, we're not having the, we're not having the strategies. On classroom management. So it's more of a co- peer peer coaching. So they they were there with um the two volunteers, they. They're given and then we also have.
They have good lunch today. I I don't know how how we can prepare ten and many things that we does for the school. I'm telling you.
Okay, one more question, one more question, Madam Chair, um Miss Ann.
Yes, ma'am.
The students that are habitually absent. Are we working closely with the mayors to get help and support from them, especially those that are hard to reach?
Yes, so in the past two years, how we did it is first improve our administration side. Which means monitoring who's absent or not. So last school year, we have, um we find the procedures to make sure that we monitor these students. And then we have a group who goes house to house, counselors. Especially for during COVID, right? Because he are wondering why are they not back. Uh or they did not come here to pick up their hard rock classes. Or what do they have? So um we have not gone to that um.
Stage yet.
Stage yet of um involving the mayor's office because so far. What we have been um giving was somehow in showing improvement in their attendance. But now we updated the O D R two and making sure and now that we have a new attendance officer two. He's working hard with our teachers. He no longer needs to wait for the teachers to plug in attendance because he is also trained on Red Web. Just produce this attendance report. So that we we remove that extra paperwork from the teacher that they keep track. How many missed three days, six days, nine days, twelve days, because he can just. Right away, print the report and know that there's five in first grade, there's three in this grade level and then.
So it's addressed almost immediately.
Yes, and then he contacts the parents and just he gets the proof that the teacher was. Teacher called the parents first and then you're now on the third level. Because teacher called you, an administrator called you, now I'm calling you as attendance officer. So next will be, sorry, you have two, if you have excuse note, then please provide that. So but definitely, Miss Lu, I will try to, I will put that on my note to. To not to forget to include the mayor's for for assistance for support. Yes.
Your laser, sorry, if not, nothing works, there's a contacting.
Oh, actually, I remember during COVID, we reached out to the mayor. So Mister B would drop off the hard rock he packed it to the mayor's office and then the family will go to the mayor's office to pick up. So we did that um.
Check some balance.
Just to make sure we are all. So just a quick overview of the referrals. Um compared to last school year, the highest grade level that has um inflections. Recorded infections are the two um eight graders and nine graders. Um there's a trend that this is true, you don't wanna uh. Yes, so now the number one um risk uh infraction here is um. Use of cellphone or electronic device. Uh number two is vaping. Um we're comparing to the last school year, last school year, number one infection is vaping. So we had call public health, we did everything, we have a training session, we invited them. We they showed what's gonna be affected, your lungs and things like that. We also have a cessation program where we bring them to help them stop. Stop somehow, and this is also under consolidated brand somehow. Uh we are able to send students for the cessation program to help them stop. But um compared to last school year, um very minimal. And from vaping, it just went to uh cellphone. Uh we have cellphone policy, the policy we updated to make sure that they're not allowed to use their cellphones. Because we found that they're using their cellphones not for instructional purposes.
Not in the classroom.
In the classroom and they're not using it because they we have computers anyway for their use. So cellphone is for emergencies, so you need to call, but you shouldn't be calling your parents or anyone during your in a classroom. Um. And the fact that we are able to record these infections, that means we have very good monitoring system. We could take and we can we confiscate those devices and then you give it to them. So it's very minimal, the behavior for from August fourteen to September thirteen. That's just it. We even have the through the Swiss system that we monitor their infections. We even have the time of day. So we noticed that the infections happen on a Thursday.
What, why another day?
They get bored, it's like. Even the time, referral time is uh eight to nine A M. And that's what we noticed, that's the transition time from their first period. Yeah, eight thirty nine, eight thirty when they come from from class and the transition time from their first period to the second period. So while they're walking, they would be bringing out their cellphones, texting and things like that. Days of the week, everything is covered and we have a good um system to.
You know, I I you could imagine that this is this would be processed on the renewal of your. Your charter, right? How you're trying to. This this tragedy that you have, making sure that you know kids are in check, right? The attendance and and monitoring are all here and and to the detail of like, yeah.
Another location too is inside the class because mainly teachers are aware that, oh, I can see you. You're hiding your phone, uh right?
In all in all aspect of your reporting on this one. You could really uh because you already developed a system, so the tracking system is easy. So your data and then uh custody is very heavy on data. And at the same time, your your audit is rather your um. When when we go back to uh our uh. Uh accreditation, it's all about data, 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 more than the renewal. I think because the renewal and their financials and your renewal of your charter is is but actually. The 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 strongest, the strongest consideration when you have to. Of course, your audit and all the data and supports, how you you have to do money, you know, incidents like this.
Yeah, very informative, look at the eight, the night, they are so high.
These guys are the ones, they're all their, all their, all their shooting, they're all their.
Their hormones are. Even with, um we can easily track even where the bait is coming from, it's very interesting. When we asked them where the bait come from, it's from that one, they're from that.
Oh my.
From any, any, anybody from this school.
And they take it from there wherever. And that was a little challenging for us.
Because then the control now is in the house.
But we call the parents, we make sure they're aware. And it really the fact that it went on this um one. We um we have the involvement of our parents.
Okay, any any more items, any any question regarding the uh. The all all the data that's been presented to us for coming out, the attendance and discipline.
Curriculum updates, N E H S is National English Honor Society. So last school year, along with all our. The foundational, when we're laying down the groundwork for. Um college interview readiness and our C T E program, we offer reader classes, we have. And things like that to prepare them. Um, to prepare our students and develop their overall well-being, not just their academics. But also their social, emotional, um everything in the involvement, yeah. So um usually it's a renovation or a identification of. What we can offer our students who are below the benchmark.
Yes.
But we noticed based on data that one percent of our students from their district wide assessment. Results, one percent is in the exceeding. So although generally they're below or just on um. On level, there's one percent who's always in the exceeding portion of the. So. We are also discovering that one percent is actually from a whole court. Now was here since Kinder that time. So although it's a very small amount. Uh we're trying with that help. And at the same time too, if we are offering these social supports, um. Um programs, regular programs to help them be on grade level. We cannot forget those who are already above. So I thought of, because we didn't have the opportunity before to put them in advanced classes. So last school year, I reached out or I got a hold of this um. Um organization, the National English Honor Society, because that's a that's a literacy. Um school, right? I connected with them, the principal, the principal coordinator and uh we um. What inspired me in connecting with this is the one percent of our students. So we have somehow social support, they're part of the society of the English Honor Society, just like the Honor Society.
Yeah, we just need to break them in that one.
So that's our next step, of course, we wanted to have that also the. But we just tried to let them know that we're not forgetting about you who are already out there, so. This is um. The only school here on Guam is Guam. And this are, we're under the U O T National English Honor Society. So we're arranging, we already ordered their stuff, there's a ceremony to acknowledge them, so we'll definitely send you the.
So it's pretty much like the N H S.
Yes, it's pretty much and um N H S, it's just like specific for.
For English, right?
So we'll definitely send you the information so that you'll be able to be. You'll be present during their session and test. It's gonna be uh very small, um because that's just one percent, but.
Yeah, but that would create some kind of like awareness that, hey, we have such student gap, so there'd be a lot of other kids that might.
That would push the other kids to work harder.
Yeah, so the other kids would would like would like to see the the the. Participation on this one, how to get how to get there.
Which leads me to epicenter, if you still remember Madam Faye, when we went to the charter conference, Miss Lou. We talked to this one or group, um. What's her name? Sylvia. And then she was like sharing with us in one of the sessions, this is a. Um, organization and performance management system, it's an epicenter, it's like a dashboard of all our information. All our data, it's like the collection, the main server. So that when a teacher, when a board, then the public wants to know, where is your. Compliance, where is the annual report? Pull it out instead of just having it before hard copy, which we're still working on. Because we have so many policies, it's printed, but when it's it, now it's all on the server, but. Um, this is more of a. An organizer, like a filing cabinet where.
Can find it easily.
Yeah, and it's connected to our website, that way. Um, they actually already pulled out some of the information that we have on the website, so it's already in. And then the beauty or the main purpose of this, what attracted me to this and. We have encouraged it is that um it's a man, a performance management system. So administrators who have that account, they can see dashboards like charts like this. Um, you have a task, the just for example, teachers have to submit their lesson plans. So when they assign the task to the teachers, they can see this group has it. And then there's a monitoring record of. And it streamlines the the efficiency, streamlines the tasks. So we're in the process of putting in all all of it, um. We're privileged that Mister Krasostomo, being the person focused on data. Uh was able to attend the meeting with with epicenter and he's been asking the question. If you have this data, you have this data, where do we put it? Where's their storage and this is the answer to that, so it's centralized epicenter from the world itself. And epicenter um does all the charter schools in the United States.
How 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 much is the year? Is there any annual uh thing that you need to subscribe to?
Yes, the management of. The data.
Updates and stuff like that.
But even if compliance, right, even if. They even hold like one charter school, they have ten charter schools in one district, right? Or one um authorized, they can do that. So we can all, they can separate our data as well with elementary, middle school. So should we improve and have another charter school, they can manage. So next, are we are we ready to move on, the Mister Krasostomo is here. College interview readiness. Just an overview and update, thank you Mister Krasostomo for for being part of this and all the time and effort that you have been. Um, giving us for Guam Academy, so please take it away, sir.
Yes, thank you, can I have the slide two?
Slide first. So Miss Lou, if you can see on your screen as well, it's uh the slides are being shown.
Okay.
Hi Lou, Madam Faye.
Hi Mister Krasostomo.
Hi Lou. Thank you for having me today, I'm here to brief you on the college and career readiness program. Or G A C specifically, this program is not at any other school. It was conceived and it's actually carried out, conceived by you, Madam Faye. Pushing that envelope to get this program going, so here it is.
You can't imagine.
Yeah.
You can't imagine, but that's, I I wanted it beyond what this guy is thinking, but. My god, it's amazing how you.
It it's gonna get there.
And it stemmed from the.
The trip you went on.
Last year, and it's through her initiative that this program now is coming to fruition.
Mister Charleff came back and was pushing me for months to get it going. This is the the fruit of that seed planet way back then, um. Next slide. Before, could you go back? I'd like to explain the logo. That the committee came up with, and this logo will be made and put in the office. It'll be four by four.
Can we put G A C there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So it could be a million profit.
The the color here, Madam Faye. Is going to be your teal color.
Yes.
And the the yellow is going to be your reflective of your yellow, so it's your school color and this will be C C R. And this is the G A C color like Mister Charleff was insisting in our last meeting.
Brighter blue and gold.
And the whole notion of that um is that the student. And then the start is the goal of the. Upon completing their high school program, the students, the goal is to be either college or career ready.
C C R.
C C R. And then the blue, of course, is the school and the and. I also suggested that the arrow should be like the parents, but.
We didn't want it too busy, that's all, we're trying to make it simple, it says everything.
But I asked him to do at least a watermark, you know, but but I was overruled by the committee.
Over committee of one? Ivy Robert?
We we actually have a committee.
Yeah, Thursday at nine o'clock.
Amazing, yeah.
Every Thursday, so this one, it, I call them the four domains. Of what our students are gonna go into, college, military, apprenticeship. Or straight into the job market, and I have statistics, Madam Faye, from our work session that you were asking for. On where they wanna go, so we have all that data.
She started with the the last meeting, just like that, let's go and find out where they wanna go.
Yes, and we have all that.
Now you've got solid data.
You're asking all the right questions, but we had it, we had it, okay, next slide. Uh, this program will be carried out in three phases. And I know Madam Faye and the rest of the board members who are here before, I'm I'm recapping. But it'll be covered in three phases, phase one is build the infrastructure. And that's a lot of work, and I'm gonna explain that in a minute. Phase two is synchronize and plug, it's knowing what our students' interests are and plugging them into the community. That's our next phase, and our third phase is to monitor, evaluate, and adjust. From what we know, so we keep growing in this program. This is a four-year program from ninth grade to twelfth grade. So the students in the ninth grade are gonna be the full recipient of the full program. The students graduating this year, they're catching the tail end of this program because it's not in full effect yet. Okay, next. So we're in phase one, phase one, this is everything we've done and are doing right now. The first thing is to create that leadership team, uh we call it the C C R Working Group. We meet every Thursday and our current. Um, topic is credit assignment for the C C R courses that we're gonna offer. So the follow-on meeting to this and update, because part of my contract is to update the board on where we are with this program. So the next one is a policy. Um, overview and how rates are going to be included in the curriculum. For the incoming eighth graders, that's how. Far ahead we're thinking. Yes, so everybody now from in the high school. Will be going through the traditional legacy credit program. And. The eighth grade coming in, that'll be the first class for this new policy, okay? So we've done everything here to include the four domains and where the kids' interests lie. But I wanna call your attention to this I C A P. I'll talk about it more, and we're gonna have two students present their I C A P to you today.
Before before you do that. This is, let me just uh could you clarify the correlate aspects of D I, is it at all? Because the D I, the D I aspect of our operation is to a certain degree, how are we now incorporating it with C C R? How do we jump into that? Because the 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 big, the big issue at one point in time, do we still wanna do D I from certain. Big level because it doesn't work anymore. The intensity of D I, as I have read about it, is really on the early age, right? So how did you incorporate that with your?
Yeah, see, that was our our problem and our question early on in this whole program. So D I is from K to five. And it's really correcting and filling in the gaps in reading. Uh that the students have. It's a great program, but how do you transition into the middle and high school? So reading literacy is that connective. Piece in the middle school. And then Z E L O, which is a new program that we just incorporated, is a career program. An exploratory career program that's implemented from K to twelve. So. As they take D I, they're taking Z E L O, which is career, so you have concurrent. Um, foundational programs, taking them into the high school. Which is the reading literacy, now they they read to learn. Before, they were learning to read. Now they're reading to learn and the careers, the career.
What a genius explanation.
Yeah, the career track actually starts at K. We knew that starting in ninth grade was not sufficient enough. To get a good understanding of the sixteen clusters. And I'll talk about that more, but more importantly, if we start at K in exploration. And exposure to the careers, by the time they get to ninth grade, they know what they want, pretty much. They might change, but they pretty much know what they want in the four domains. So that's how we're connecting D I. Um, so it works perfectly. And I know Ann is going.
Because you have your reading mastery on your D I, which is just gonna play along the the higher level of of what you wanna be.
Because how how successful can you be in a career if you can't read? So if we really shore up the reading, they will be successful.
And career exploration is not only introduced in the middle school years, but all the way from higher.
We started them earlier.
Yeah, the Z E L O.
The Z E L O program exposes them to the different careers. That they only used to know doctor, teacher, without this one is. That they only used to know doctor, teacher, but now this one is.
Now it's the sixteen clusters, so it, it works perfectly. So now you have two core offerings, the DI and the elementary, ZELLO, for K to twelve. But more importantly, your CCR program now is scaffold by these programs. I, again, it's not, it's not being done in any other school. They have a, a trade screw down.
Yeah, there are one trades again.
Nothing near what we're doing in.
Yeah, I had enough, I had enough, because trades just go in, doesn't matter. I have no preparation.
And they need to know what they're gonna be designing.
And I think it's the preparation that really is, is what's gonna make them successful.
The I cap, sir.
Okay, and, and the I cap, we'll talk about more, but again, it's a GAC-specific product. It's called the Individualized College and Career Action Portfolio. Um, so it's, it's specifically GACs. And the two students are gonna present theirs. I've been working on it just for a couple of weeks. And they're doing really well. And I'll tell you what's included there. Phase two is actually synchronizing and plugging into the workforce. So now we get their interest in phase one. Phase two is plugging them into the community, especially the seniors. In, in their senior year, in the afternoons, we want them going out.
With the work.
To the work site. We want them going to GCC College Trades Academy. So they've learned everything they need to learn and acquire. And then in the afternoon of senior year, they're plugged into the community.
Even the Guam Mary Understraining Center.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so they're at, this is not the reality of it all.
That's right.
This is your initiation, and this is, this is really the real thing now.
Right.
But when, when you get them exposed to others.
From classroom learning now to.
So we're going from theory to practice.
Right.
And they're still in high school. Theory to practice. That's the concept. Okay, next. And phase three, of course, is the evaluation.
But sir, you need to mention that uh, we have been working alongside with the Department of Labor.
Labor.
The Department of Labor, and we, and I raised the issue about the, the Obuya.
Doing the way of, way of.
We're, we're gonna get to it, when we are going to the.
Alright.
Portfolio.
Work for the investment opportunity.
But thanks.
I'm just getting excited about it.
We're, we're all excited.
He wants to get to the end.
He's drinking. Too quiet, you know?
Okay.
He gets excited, I know.
Can you text for the two kids? So again, these are the four domains of the board members. Just, really just keep the four domains in mind.
Yeah.
These are the four options we're offering here at GAC for them to go into. Um, because it covers the sixteen clusters. Four domains, sixteen clusters, and there's thousands of pathways in each cluster.
We talked about pathways, we're talking about the occupations that.
Specific occupation, yep.
And I, I like your aligning your data with, with Department of Labor as far as like what are we implementing?
Yeah.
Their five-year survey.
Students will be excited with that, just to show, okay, guys, this is the, oh, it might change. I don't know how much they collect what, what section of the Department of Labor does that. Uh, but the LMS, the Labor Market Information, the LMI. Those are the guys that produce all those reports. This is, these, these are the courses that are high, or these are the work that are highly demand right now, right? The healthcare is always there, and then there are the evolving, evolving of.
I'll be working with Greg Massey.
Yes, Greg Massey, yes, yeah.
And he's the one that really introduces that report.
Yeah.
Um, and he's the one that introduced me to that survey data for the five-year projection on labor.
Labor market information. It's data because the government uses that as well.
Yeah, right, yeah. And, and of course, that's what I used when I was the buildup uh, director for the governor.
Yeah.
We had to rely heavily on those labor. Yep. Okay, next. Uh, and you've seen this slide before, um, Madame, Madame Fay, the, I'm sorry, it's all mixed up. I should've cleaned this up before, as we said to.
Okay, but it was the last time.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. But anyway, if you look at it, the student is at the center of this ecosystem.
Yes.
Because that's who are trying to um, advise, guide, and move into the job market, right? Outside that is the teacher and the parent. Those are the most influential people in that student's life. And then you have the board, the admin team around it. And then our program, Ingenuity, Wayfinder, the College and Career Program that we had this year, Direct Instruction. These are all supporting in the curriculum sense to support this student to become a well-rounded, global citizen, like our mission says. And then we have our Cork Standards and then our National Readiness Standards uh, for careers. And outside this is all the safety net for the ecosystem. Cybersecurity, student personnel safety, all hazard safety. So Anne's been working with the safety officer on this whole safety issue. If we don't have safety at school, we don't have a program.
Yeah.
Right? And I think as board members, uh, you agree with that totally. So this is our ecosystem.
Yeah, you need to not preserve the technology or what you have there, it doesn't use at all.
Absolutely. Okay, next. Next.
Uh, but what, I need to go back to your, to your uh, three I types on the cybersecurity aspect of the.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
So when we talk about college and career readiness, this is a definition that we are, we agreed as a committee, a working group, to adopt. And in its basic sense, is to prepare our students to enter the world of work post-secondary. So how do we prepare them for that, right? Um, there are many models. DOE has a model. I think our model, and, and it's your model once you adopt it, um, that to get students ready for the world of work, I think there's a lot of things that go into it. And the credit assignment and the curriculum we're, we're actually developing, like CCR one, College and Career Readiness, Level One, that's ninth grade. Anne, Anne can talk about it. CCR two, tenth grade, three, and there are very specific course uh, description for each year and what they're taking. And as we develop that, you will have a chance during a work session to say yea or nay.
Um, because the concern is you have so many subjects that needs to be completed from ninth to the twelfth grade, right? How do you insert now your current technical?
We figured that.
Without affecting the, the full requirement of the Department of Education, right? So you gotta be able to make sure that you, you show the trustees the amount of time that needs to be incorporated. So it's, it's a win-win situation.
Right.
Bringing this early on at ninth, tenth, you're completing the high school and a career at the same time.
That's correct. And we've, I think we've cracked the nut about ninety percent.
That's always the problem. When do you bring it? I don't know, that's GDO is probably, probably, but it's easier for us to put that together because.
I think when they see the model we're putting together, DOE will probably adopt it.
They need to.
Cybersecurity, please!
They, they, they need to ask the board of trustees for their application.
Yeah.
Cybersecurity, please!
Really excellent.
Right.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm so happy. Really, I'm very excited. Go ahead, sir, sorry.
Next slide, please. So that's our definition that we're working on.
Yeah.
Now, when we actually get to graduation.
Yes.
We are going to have a college re- uh, ready endorsement on your diploma. There's two sides, right? When you open it up, that your regular diploma, which is your college-ready endorsement. That means they pass all their um, academic curriculum.
Right.
And then you're gonna have a career endorsement on the other side. That's a certificate of endorsement for career readiness. Their picture is gonna be on there for graduation. We have a quote that means that they live by all through the four years. And on the bottom, it's going to be college, military, uh, apprenticeship, or straight into the, the job market. Uh, and that, so ten years from now, after they graduate, they open it up, they see it, and it'll mean something to them.
Where I started.
Again, there's no other school doing it. You're gonna be the first school to actually give a college-ready endorsement as well as a career-ready endorsement, justified by a curriculum that supports these endorsements. Okay, next. Lu, if you have any questions, just chime in.
No, you, you guys have kept me up to date and I really appreciate.
Uh, thank you. And then, of course, we have our social, emotional, and our character development portion. We cannot discount the importance of those. We have our academic and your college career standards, but you've got to pay attention to the social, emotional side, as well as the character development. And there are fourteen power skills that we're gonna teach the kids in the I cap. It's not covered in the class, really. Leadership does, but the soft skills will be covered. Okay, next.
The new word now in the job market is essential skills.
Essential skills.
We, we call this stuff, but.
Yeah, I, I think it's essential skills, right?
The uh, that conference, they told us that has changed from soft skills to now go essential skills.
Remember all of that?
I don't know.
I know.
You can always.
We just left it there.
So here, here is another groundbreaking uh, aspect of the career, the college and career program that you're gonna implement. There's no other school of Guam that identifies four pillars of a college and career-ready student. Here, if this is adopted with your vision, mission, statement, your critical learning needs, I think you should put in your four pillars for the college and career.
This will be a new thing that you can actually put together with, with our mission statement.
Yeah. So when you put it in your annual report.
Yes, as well.
It's there. Capitalize on it because it's everything here that you're doing color, I mean, covers college and career ratings, everything.
I, I think since our annual report's already done, I think this will be a, a beautiful of, kind of like, something different from what we usually present on our.
Yeah.
Uh, on our yearly annual report. This is something I think that I hope we should have this copy to the senator, to the, to the chairwoman of the, of the charge school. Because this will be something that they will take notice on. Because it be, this is, this is really like, you really are evolving to, to bringing this to the, to the new trend about education is all about, uh, on current tech.
I'm sure if you present this to the legislature.
Yeah, it's, I think we should have a, I, I think on the presentation, we should ask more audience for the legislature, the, the education committee chair to really look at this and say, if you can give us some briefing for us to be able to review on what, what, on how the charge, Guam Academy charter school is really evolving in, in terms of like.
And the thing about it starts in elementary.
Yeah.
Exactly. It has to.
So this is like a performance rating uh, uh, score, but they overrule me, but I'd like instead of developing, I like performing, then performing plus, highly performing, and then excelling. But no one listens to me.
We're outnumbered.
Outnumbered.
You still have the board, she's gonna decide.
The board can overrule the committee.
Absolutely.
But I'm not going to do that. I hate the committee.
Next slide.
This is very nice. I was hungry earlier, now I'm not hungry.
Yeah, woo, woo. It's over pretty soon. So this is the, the goals and objectives. Uh, I should've put this up front as a precursor to everything, but a hundred percent of our students.
This should be the first.
Will be exposed.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think understanding the background and going right into the goals and objectives, we can understand it more. But eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth, and eleven, we haven't started with eighth grade. We're still working with ninth to twelve. Uh, so ninth grade, after exploratory and exposure, they pick four career interests.
I, I think ninth is, is, is good.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what we can do on the eighth to kind of like initiate them, but you're, you're on track. From ninth on to the twelfth grade, by twelve grade, they're solid. They're ready to, to, to.
Yes.
Already have the data to gather, starting from the eighth grade. Actually, the ZELLO program collects data from the kindergarten because they're already
Yeah.
in the program, so it has a dashboard that tells us when you were kinder, this is what you are interested in. First grade, second, so it completes the.
But, but you know, uh, but he was right that he could change.
Yeah, you can change, yeah.
On how, you know, exposures and interests.
So do we monitor at every grade level?
Yes, yes. And every student who have their I cap, so.
That's what the I cap is.
Yeah.
The I cap, every grade, we're just starting from nine to twelve right now. But it's like an IEP.
Right.
For a special needs student.
Yes, yes.
Every student has an I cap, and they develop it themselves.
The IEP is a different story. I cap is, is, is far away from.
Absolutely. Yes.
But sir, you may want to change it from seventeen to sixteen.
The seventeen is the military.
Seventeenth, we put it down because the military, the military wasn't part of that.
Part of the cluster.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Based on the data, there's a lot of.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, sir. But we, we at GAC see seventeen.
You gotta overread it again.
Because Guam, I need to.
He's only a full-blown turner. You gotta step up. You're a five-star.
But it's interesting to see how they started out on what they can.
Right, right, right.
That's exactly the reflection they're gonna do.
That's right.
Later on, as they develop it. Okay, and in ninth grade, they pick four. Tenth grade, they drop one of the four and stick with three. And then as they go up to twelfth grade, they're left with one that they really wanna go into. That's when we start synchronizing and plugging. Because for four years, you've been thinking about this. You should know, right? Yeah. Okay, next. In, in a visual sense, because Mr. Charcliff loves visuals, so he had me do this way. So eighth, ninth, ten, eleven, again, it's just a four, three, two, one. And eighth grade is really exploration and exposure. Um, actually, I call it the three Es, uh, exposure, exploration, and explanatory, which is what I think it is in the eighth grade. Okay?
Why is the explanatory linked, the last one? What'd you, what'd you say the three?
There's, well, there's.
They, each cluster is explained in detail.
Explain.
Uh, it's, and so it's explanatory, exposure, and exploratory.
Somehow at their eighth grade, they already have a grasp. Oh, um, actually, it's on this side. Um, um, HR is this side. They can explain it for themselves. It's just not a, um, uh, an idea of what it is. They're not settled yet on what it's.
Yeah, so in the ninth grade, we're thinking that CCR one, in the ninth grade, we hire one teacher. And that teacher teaches the seventeen clusters in detail, take a week at a time to teach it, bring in a guest speaker.
I was just gonna ask about that.
From, yes, from, from that cluster as an expert.
Then what, I think, I think that one is an easy one, on identifying people to bring in. It's just a matter of how you break the classes to make sure that the current classes really injected in solidly, not just, you know.
And I'll be working with that teacher, um, hand in hand.
Will you be giving the kids an idea of what these are, the highly needed positions of jobs?
Actually, we're, we're gonna bring in the survey results from labor.
The, the labor market information with, from labor is pretty solid in what's happening in the nation. And what's happening also locally on the, on the very, uh, on the man job.
That's what we really do is that man job.
I think, I think that you show that to the students that I really wanted to do better in their lives, right? That's really an exposure on it. Oh, I can do this. And even the salaries are there.
To add up onto that, since you mentioned that, just, just so you have a preview, the ZELLO program allows that from the students. So when they first start it, you have to click. So when they first start it, you have to click. And then, like, some of our students, they already have, I want to be a pilot. So what are your requirements to be a pilot? Um, if you click on that, what's the average salary for a pilot? And you have to choose, is it in Guam, is it in the States? It has that program already, it's injected, and it has military, if that's what the. Because it's not just the sixteen, it also has one on military.
Excellent program.
So it needs up to date so that it would show you comparison. Oh, I wanna move to Texas now because this is the high. Or as a poor pilot.
And, and you know, just to dovetail off that, we're trying to get our students, part of the career readiness is. Get their certificates so they can transfer to other places, but still take that certification with them. So we'll get into that next. The policy, we'll get to next meeting, so I don't wanna get too much into that. Next. Now, the I-CAP. So this is the definition I came up with. We can change it, but it's a digital portfolio. For the students.
Thank you.
It's good. Coming. Yeah, you did it again, Ken.
I'm sorry, because I wanted to see the entire deck.
Sorry, Lou.
So this is the individualized college and career action portfolio. Again, very unique to GATs. Nobody else is doing it. Um, it's an action portfolio because the student, it's a living resume where the students update it constantly. And every week, they are putting in journals. What did I do this week towards my career? Towards, or what power skills did I use this week? And how is it gonna help me in my career aspirations? Okay, so here today, I have two students and I'm gonna have them present their I-CAP. Um, Russell, you're first, and JT. So they. They've been working on this for a couple of weeks.
Because they're ready to go into the work.
A lot of them wanna go to college.
Oh, yes, that's why we.
And I'll get to that after this presentation on the, the breakdown.
Good, I'm glad to come.
Uh, the college is really impressive because, you know, our kids, they think. Once they go to college, they can get a good job right away. Not necessarily, right? I think telling them the trades is where the need and the money is.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you, the Navy, they have a career at, at a part of a ship, would maybe offer the kids if they want.
Oh, yeah, our kids get the certification, we can plug them in there.
That's where my husband started, friendship from.
Like the ship repair facility they're hiring right now, but they accept kids with a silver certificate and work keys.
Yeah.
So we're, work keys is gonna be part of it.
So the guys, the guys, the work is.
Work keys is part of the weekend.
Alright.
Hello.
So everybody, this is Russell. I'd like to introduce.
Hi, Russell.
Russell, Mr. Kanai, how are you?
Yeah, my name is Russell Kanai, and this is my journey to college and career readiness. It's my portfolio. And to start off, this is the table of content. That's what I'll be talking about. Which is all of these about me, my cut, or my pathway, my goals, my core values, and what. So about me, who am I? I can't, can, can you see it?
That's okay, Lou, you're traveling.
My name is Russell Kanai Junior, and I am a senior at Guan Academy Charter School. And I've been attending the school for six years. I'm seventeen years old and come from a loving and hardworking family. I'm from Palau, but I've been on Guam most of my life. I love where I come from and I love the island where I stay. I'm interested in college, specifically Yogi, but if there's, that's not the case, then I'll head over to D C N Taco Challenges there. Why am I interested? It's because I want to get a better career and pathway started for me, but also meet more new people and expand my horizon in knowledge. Uh, as you can see, this is my goals. My personal goals is to aspire and conquer obstacles thrown at me. And to also be a better role model for my niece and sister. And to in general, level up myself to max. Uh, my academic goals, of course, to keep my grades up and graduate, because that's my number one goal for this year. And my college, my career goal is college, of course, which I already explained, but. Yeah, with Mr. Christosmo, I can already see my future with that.
Yes, it's all about the future, I'm telling you.
And next are my core values and beliefs. I believe in to be respectful, responsible, and resourceful. Like Guan Academy Charter School. Next slide, my self-reflection. Where am I at today? Where I'm at, I'm a senior at Guan Academy. I'm studying to, I'm studying hard to push myself to be the best and to graduate on time. I would say I'm, I'm in a comfortable place as of right now, but I could be in a better place. Where do I wanna be? Where, where do I wanna be is where I wanna be stable or in a stable and friendly environment. Where I don't need to be ashamed for struggling to push to the next step. I wanna be in college.
It's okay.
I wanna be in college and I'm older and strive to be stronger both physically and mentally for both, uh, life at school. This is, uh, what Mr. Christostamo helped us on, our career sport test. We, we took questions and it shows us.
This is online, so they took the test, and these are all career fields that they qualify for. And it's a bunch of questions they answered, and this is their interest.
And after taking that test, it said, uh. Uh, it said, uh, I'm a scholar, because five point three percent, uh, one of a kind, hard to find.
And this is from the, the Holland Code test?
Yes.
So they took two tests online. One is the Career Explorer and the other one is the Holland Code. And this is where it measures what percent of interest they have. These five percent of the users who took this test, uh, scored in that level. Five point three percent, really low. That means it's in the very top tier of that, that score. Our students are impressive, by the way. Board members, you gotta be proud of them.
Yep.
I, I, I took the driving, the driving force that is really you. This would not be into their awareness if we did not talk about this or even introduce this. This would just be a regular freshman graduation, and it's your choice whether you wanna be. But if you're, if you're preparing these guys, certainly eight, nine, ten, all the way to graduation. They are already have ideas and actual exposure to what is the future to be like, right? I didn't have this, I didn't have this graduating from my school. I, none of us have this. It's up to you when you finish high school. Your mom and dad will just tell you. It's up to you, whether you want, you wanna go to school, blah, blah, blah. So thank goodness that we have, uh, GATs at the. Mr. Christosmo driving all of this.
Or to hopefully pass that.
To be prepared, yes. None, no, none, any, none of these schools in Guam have this.
That's true.
You're, you're learning one first, so we're blessed.
And on top of this, you know, I observed, uh, first hand, students voluntarily coming to his office. Asking for further guidance, his thought. And, and Robert was interacting with the students and he knows them by name. And I just told him just before I came here, I said, Ma'am Robert, I'm very happy to see, uh, that you even know the students by their first name. So that tells you the level of connection, right? And then he's going to be helping the students, or every student will go through the I-CAP, a presentation that.
You know, we're, we're zooming into the class every Thursday to reach every student in the nine to.
Every time, nine to twelve?
Yes, so.
Okay, good. This is technology.
I have a comment, I have a comment for, um, Russell. Russell, we're so proud of you. We really are. Uh, I see that pilot is one of the areas. Uh, that you may be exploring. You have a resource in that room, and that resource is Mr. Charcliff. He knows everything from the beginning to the end on how you can achieve that role if you're really interested in being a pilot. Right, Mr. Charcliff? You can't say no.
Cost me a hundred thousand though. When broke.
Proud of you that you're taking your, your.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Don't lose that, don't lose that, uh, interest, okay?
What is so interesting about this is kind of from elementary.
Yeah.
Yeah, imagine.
So as you mind, you can see how many have changed, really changed from the very beginning.
It's too initial, very initial, or just an early stage. But can you imagine by next year or halfway next year? We're just all introducing this just for the, for the board to be notified, but at the end, you know, I, I, just like you, I'm very. Exposing them from elementary on to this.
That's why we need to keep Robert.
And I look at where we just started at the beginning, we're just starting now at this end.
Yeah, so.
Once we get this to, to full execution.
You will have a very, um, very clear program. The college and career is actually your focus. That's what's gonna show.
And I say that this is working because really, I need to, and Anne and some of the other leadership is exemplary.
Yes.
Uh, had not been her support and her vision, we were just talking today over lunch. That you are a visionary leader and we really appreciate that.
Yes.
Because Anne is very, very supportive in, in every, uh, action and decision that we make as a group. Because no one singular person is making that decision. It's a collective decision, you know, and, and, and. Sometimes they didn't value my input, but, but at least they listen. They listen, but yeah.
They listen, but they did not accept us before. But at least you're giving them ideas.
It was, it was considered.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry. Mr. Camacho.
Go ahead, Camacho.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is JT K. Camacho. This is my portfolio, my journey towards college and career readiness. Now, the first slide is outline of my portfolio, everything you would expect me to have on, as you can see here. This is a similar to what Russell has. Now here is about me. Now, my name is JT Camacho. I'm currently seventeen years old and a senior at Guan Academy Charter School. I'm from Guam and I've been living here my whole life. I'm a part of a family of six with three brothers and both my parents. Now, my whole life, I've grown up in a middle-class family, so working hard for what I want in life has always been something I've tried to do. Tried to do well both in and out of school. Has really taught me that I can do anything I put my mind to. And now here's a few pictures of, this is me, there's Russell, there's me as a kid, my mom, next slide.
So all these kids are gonna personalize their portfolios, so it's gotta mean something to them.
That's, that's, that is good because you're looking back at where you started. I was like from where you were actually growing, that's great.
Here's a quote, words to live by, by Eminem. You can do anything you set your mind to.
Is there a song on that?
Yes.
Got a bit song on that, Eminem.
Now which pathway am I most interested in? I'm interested in a career in the military, specifically in either the Navy or the. Air Force branch. Now, why am I interested? I'm interested in these two branches because I want to be a pilot.
They're going to the airports.
Now, my goals, my goals in life, this is my personal goals. I wanna be really good at guitar, and I also wanna be a person. That I can be proud of by making a good life for myself and being a good person. Now, my academic goals are to keep my grades good and my GPA. And as a side note, also like keep my citizenship good.
Well, tell us what your GPA is, because I think that's very impressive. He's a four-point student.
Really? Awesome.
My goals are to become a pilot in the military by first going to pilot school, then becoming an F twenty-two pilot. And then retire and become a airline pilot.
So these are goals looking to the future.
The military will pay for all your licenses.
Yes.
Now, my core beliefs and values, I have three. My biggest is being family-oriented. Raised, being raised in, in like a tribal household, always a family, that family comes first for anything, of course. Having respect for others, also being raised in a tribal household, has really ingrained the idea of always respecting people. Their cultures and the world around us. Now, the golden rule is my third, uh, core belief and value. I fir, I firmly believe in the idea of treating others how you would wanna be treated, because what goes around comes around.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Now, my self-reflection, where am I at today? Currently, I feel like I'm well on my way to becoming what I want in life. Because I've been doing well in school. I've been a good brother and son to my family, and I'm very focused on what matters currently, graduating and pursuing my dreams for it. Now, where I want to be, I want to be a person that my kids can look up to, with a good career, being a positive role model. Additionally, I wanna reach a point of like financial security where I don't have to work unless I want to, and I can, I feel comfortable.
That's possible, you can, you can do it.
Don't to Ken, talk to Mr. Charcliff, he knows how to do that.
Oh, no.
You hardly, you hardly works. What he said, lots of money.
If I were to go to college, what would I be interested in? I would try to major in either physics, because, you know, understanding the way the world works is very important since being a pilot, like aerodynamics and stuff. As well as, uh, mechanical engineering, because that also dictates to being a pilot, knowing how, uh, the machinery works. Now, the three careers I'm interested in, my, of course, my biggest is being a pilot, because it's, it's just like a dream mine ever since I watched Top Gun. My second is being a rescue diver, because I feel like I would really make a difference.
It's been good, right?
Yeah.
Gosh, I can see you're.
My, my last is engineer. Uh, I enjoy like making stuff and like building things, so that's what I wanna do, some sort of engineer. Now, here's my, uh, assessment results, my GATs career inventory, career explorer, career tests, and my ASVAB. I'm sorry, my ASVAB, you kinda read it, I'm sorry, I didn't know. It was a fifty-six right there.
Above thirty-one, yeah, only needs thirty.
Now, my career interest profile. The things I'm most interested in are creating, persuading, and also, uh, building. And, um, though not as rare as Russell, I've been.
Russell was a scholar on that test result.
In three short words, I'm inquisitive, observant, and expressive. I'm only in the thirty percentile though. I guess. Now, my weekly, one of my weekly journal entries, what did I do towards achieving my goal this week? This week, I've been working towards my goals by working further into my I-CAP workforce, keeping tennis good in school and working hard both in and out of school. The power skills, I'm sorry, I, I didn't have that on, I'm.
We didn't start the power skills yet.
There's always room for growth though.
It holds, right?
Yes. Now, how am I feeling emotionally about my chosen career path? I feel great about the choice because it is my dream career ever since I watched Top Gun.
The movie with the pilot.
Yeah, you never watched it.
Really?
Yeah, you gotta watch it.
How am I leveling up? Through this newly implemented program, the I-CAP, I feel as though I'm leveling up by laying out the groundwork for my future career. Because instead of just having a general idea of what I wanna do, I have more of a set plan.
Like that, you know, that, that could be in one of your, uh, that could be captured in one of your, uh, GATs. Maybe, uh, an annual report of a, a, a true, a, a true testimony. Of somebody that, you know, that had really done it to the I-CAP.
Yeah, last but not least, my contact information. Guys have any opportunities or anything of that sort? Here's my phone number, my email address. Additionally, if you have any questions, you can ask.
Professional, that's the way to do it.
Right? Again, nobody's doing this at any other school, and these kids are really, are these young individuals are focusing.
That's true.
Now on their future, um.
Do you have any, for Joseph? Do you have any, well, Joseph? I didn't.
JT.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 I have something to say to JT.
Yes, ma'am.
JT, you did an awesome job, we're proud of you. I want you to know that I sent uh the committee information about United Airlines. They're recruiting a much younger age group uh with scholarship and all kinds of financial assistance. So I hope that uh Mister Chris Austin, I've given you and the committee that information through link it. And um I hope that will help JT. Good luck JT.
Thank you, hi ma'am.
But the military school will pay for you both the ground and the air. The ground school and the air, cuz they only paid for my son's ground school, but I paid for the air and that was.
Mister Charla, you need to tell them that you are a dad of a pilot with American Airlines.
He knows now.
Yeah.
Oh, he knows, okay.
Yep.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, you guys worked each other.
Thank you too.
This comes for Thanksgiving.
The next slide.
College.
Good job, keep up the good work.
So this is the data I was talking about, um.
Cuz they're already calling.
And we did nine, ten, eleven, twelve. And I, I, as I mentioned earlier, college is the big draw for a lot of our students, nine to twelve. Uh military is next and part of the military hurdle is passing the ASVAB. So we're gonna be working with them on that. Um this year or last year, the data shows that out of a hundred and eighteen students who took the ASVAB, eleven passed. That's data we have to live with, right? So from with this program and going into the next couple of years, um we are going to show that that data is going to grow.
Yep.
From where it is to last year to four years from now, it'll keep growing every year. And our students will wanna go in, have a very great opportunity to do that because they passed the ASVAB. Um JT passed the ASVAB. He's, if he wants to go in the military today, he could go.
A part of the plan that Mister Chris Austin shared with us is that we're going to prepare the students when the time comes for taking the ASVAB test. So they'll be prepared.
Yeah, because you can, you can, you can have uh, uh again, you can bring another person to do the review session for the ASVAB preparation, as a preparatory.
Yeah, and it's, it's online too, the ASVAB preparatory is online, so.
Okay, so you can just, you can just do that.
Yeah.
Regardless of the plan, to make sure that it's implemented, it's incorporated in the regular classroom. It's not just of like outside yours own, we'll train you.
Yeah.
But for, for this to work, for them to be really prepared for the exam, it must be taught.
It's in the classroom.
Incorporated within the classroom as the goal.
Right, so again, this is college and career preparatory. We have a class for work piece, we have a class for ASVAB.
ASVAB preparation.
Um and can you, can you pull up the ICAP?
That's good.
Jonah?
Because otherwise, you know, you would not have a lot of passing.
Yeah.
And that's how we're going to increase this. Yeah, the one, the first one you put up. There, no, the, the word document, ICAP.
Oh, the second.
Okay, go down. So this is the format that the students were following, next one. Next. So this is where, this is what they're following.
Very nice.
It's very comprehensive and although they gave you a snapshot of what they're working on. In its full entirety, they're going to do this whole thing, that's why it's throughout the whole year. So about me, the pathways, their goals, the reflection for careers, they're gonna map out their careers, can you go up a little? No, no, down, I guess. Um so, hold on, can you go back? Okay, that's it. So they have the GACs inventory that they took, the ASVAB, the smarter balance. All that assessment is gonna give us a good snapshot of their academic and career goals. Power skills, there are fourteen power skills that we're gonna teach throughout the year. And this, I will go on every Thursday and cover one power skill to all the ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. And then they're gonna have to write about it and how they think it's gonna work, like critical thinking. How is it used in the work environment? How's it used in class, okay? Can you go down? And then the required documents that they're gonna accumulate. Uh and this is a growing list, by the way, it's, it's very comprehensive and the working group is the group that's really infusing what we need. So when you talk about college and career ready, you're talking about them having all this as they step out of grad- graduation into the real world. They'll have, they would have applied on the hire Guam dot com. They'll have their ID or school ID, they'll have their health certificate, so- social security card, mayor's verification. Uh household income because they need that for the Department of Labor.
Even for FAFSA.
FAFSA, so they're, they're getting prepared, they don't have to go look for it because they built it into their portfolio.
I think that becomes uh an issue with a lot of students like to go, but how, where, you know?
That's right.
Now, it's finding them exactly what they need.
Just, I always thought that feeling just the FAFSA form is a little bit cumbersome, right?
Yeah, and we're gonna get rid of all that cumbersome and challenges because we're working with them here in school.
Wonderful.
Okay?
So are there.
And I guess Ann and I talked about is the GACs America that she's implemented.
Yeah.
And it'll be work-based learning going out, it'll just be another avenue of going out and working.
Could you, could you, could you approach America? I think that there will be a partnership that you can create with them.
We already have one.
That's so our, that's so our students will be volunteers.
Yes, we apply, uh we apply that last school here, so we're waiting for the stories of the.
Follow up with her.
So what has, yeah, so what has been happening over the several weeks and Robert is just too humble not to mention it. But uh we already met with Department of Labor, we met a new O G, I mean, DCC last week.
Yes.
On the work keys, uh Robert met with the military, in fact, they came here.
Yeah.
Um so we're starting to connect with the, we're building that network.
That's how it should be, obviously Canada, the trades.
Right, the trades academy, oh yeah, we went to the trades academy, so.
Yeah.
A lot of the um information that Robert is sharing, uh we have already begun the legwork and we, we went. We even, we even went to the one trades academy and we spoke to Bert Johnson. And he's very prepared to start bringing our kids.
We have fifty slots that we're going to participate in.
And all these that we are trying, they're coordinating, it's all under the consolidate, that the one I'm sharing.
And you should have heard the Department of Labor personnel last week, they were really commenting that charter school because we have the highest number of students.
Yeah.
Just enrolled in their program.
Ever since, yeah, ever since.
That far better than any public school or private school for that.
Right, and we started that only last year, we have pulled out our students, sat down with them, gave them that one-to-one guidance. So that they can um um fill up their application.
And the documents, so, yeah, so this year, I'm gonna hand carry those documents down to them personally. And we have a list beyond the fifteen that if the other schools can't fill, our students are gonna slide in. So they've already committed to that, okay? And this is the whole ICAP, so they're doing this from ninth grade all the way to twelfth grade, a new one every year. So once they finish ninth grade, they close that up and open a new one so that they have new ideas.
Updates or or update.
You know, because we want them to reflect back to their ninth grade ICAP and open it and see what the change is. If you're.
Then it would show which one that they're really interested in, because they will repeat it over again.
Right, so you know, they're not updating because when you update, you lose that data for the update. You don't wanna lose that data, you wanna see the progression.
No, but store it, make sure and, and just update what you have, explore it.
Yeah.
So yeah, they'll, they'll get, you know.
Yo, I'm sorry, this took longer, I only had ten minutes, but.
I really enjoyed the presentation, it's good, I like.
It's worth while.
Yeah.
I wanna make a comment that uh I suggested to Mister Chris Austin and the committee. That I think this is really a model of um career ed. And they should be ready to do a presentation at the National Charter School Conference.
Yes. Next year.
Yeah.
This year, Robert can do it, but he doesn't want because I'm not going.
Yeah, I was thinking even November, ACT is in November, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it's in November, late November, early December.
Is it ACT or, or uh Charter Conference?
The ACT.
Next year will be a good loop cuz we'll have data.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, next year.
Yeah.
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 For the charter year.
Are you putting everything together then you understand it?
Right, we'll be, we'll be happy to present it, uh.
Launch our boat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're on the bound, we need to tune our horns, really this week, you know what, um the media. Really, I wish the media can be here to just review this. Uh work that uh. So far, and you'll be the best person to discuss it, Robert, let me say this.
Well, this meeting, this meeting is being recorded, so it should be on YouTube.
Right.
Yeah, it's being recorded, yes.
No, but we don't think it's. But it doesn't, and it doesn't go to the, I, I think, and I think, I think, if we were ever, we were able to.
So in a, uh in a nutshell, I think this program. If taken to full fruition in four years, you will have a very uh program to be. To be emulate to all the.
Yeah, we're gonna have more kids coming to our school.
I'm so proud of us. Because that's just what it takes, you know, for years and it's all about that lady in high school. And for years, that's just all we see, it's just, I'm sorry, it's just like, we got out of high school, it's up to you, you can afford, you cannot afford. You have nothing to do but work, okay, what kind of work, right? Nobody gave you an idea, where you go, wait, cuz we all learned from that.
Yeah.
So why can't we not invest early on now with our children and don't commit the same mistake that other, I, I mean, I have to work and go to college at the same time. But does anybody know how to do that? In the Philippines, I can do that, as long as I can wash dishes, I can probably work, right? But your want is too difficult to, to, it's very limited. So give them choices where their year of military is gonna be the best because they're really placed for a lot of everything. My grandson have to go to military after many years of like not getting any career track, but now he's doing well, he's right.
So Robert is anybody interested in health, being a doctor, being a nurse?
Yeah, uh.
We're really short in that, yeah.
One of our students I just met the other day, his name is Dallas, very impressive ninth grader. He came to my office and he said, Mister Chris Austin, I know you're the career advisor. Uh let me tell you what I want to do, I wanna become a thoracic surgeon. Ninth grade, he's got a fourth grade average, really impressive kid. Um and he speaks like, uh you know, if you're not a ninth or a ninth grader beyond. Yeah, he's way beyond that and he said, can you help me? Of course, you can help me. So talking about the medical field, you've got one right here, it's gonna graduate from GACs in a couple of years. And his goal is to become a thoracic surgeon.
Right.
I'm looking at that.
Yeah, if, if you, if you have the finance, yes, if you go to the area, then you become a thoracic surgeon.
We're looking at past, so we're looking, I offered the military, the military will pay for that, going through.
Really, right? Help them get them, try to achieve their goal.
So just open doors for that student is, is what I think we need to do.
What is it, two years and then you can actually go to college with the military?
Actually, you could go to college before the military, join the military and they will keep you up till you're done with your residency.
Oh my goodness, gracious.
That's right, the military will pay.
They'll commission you as a second lieutenant, go to school wherever you want. I have a, a friend who son went to um UC Davis. Got picked up by the military to pay for his school, did his residency just last year. And they commissioned him as a second lieutenant, they were paying him, he never had to go in, report to the military. They just checked on him and his progress.
Oh my goodness, that's really nice to know.
And now he did his residency as an emergency uh medical doctor. Uh but.
Because that's what we really need in Guam, teachers, nurses, doctors.
And then I have two girls that wanna go into nursing.
Oh, good, I'm glad to hear that.
And that was one of the things I'm gonna connect them with. So you've got kids that have the interests, all we have to do is make the connection.
Yeah, right.
And how do we do that? With this program.
Right, right. If you did not have this out, then they're all just gonna be all groping in the dark on where to go from here.
This is leading them into what their future is.
Already conditioning their mind and say that this is available for me to know where I wanna go. There's, there's somebody at school or, you know, through him that will lead them, yeah.
That's right.
I, I forgot to mention and I apologize, I meet with the students face-to-face individually to solidify their choices.
Yes.
Uh but next semester, I'm meeting with them and their parents.
Alright.
To explain to the parents and they're gonna explain their career choices with the ICAP. The ICAP is also going to be student-led uh conference.
Right, right.
Play for third quarter.
Right.
So this is how they're gonna explain to their parents, what they're gonna do, how they're performing.
Oh, that's, that's gonna be awesome, I wanna be there.
You know, because then the parent will support them in whatever their side.
So that is.
I wanna be there in the next PTA, trying to just make sure the students, the star of the show and then the parents will be there.
Yeah, but we wanna be invited to that one.
It's all student-led, just like JT and Russell delivered their, they're gonna be sitting with their parents and telling their parents, this is what I wanna do.
And the nice thing about the student-led conference that we are going to prepare our students is that, let's say the student's rate is dropping, right? Then the student can tell mom or dad, A, I'm averaging a C. My short-term goal for next quarter is to, you know, I'll bring it up to a B or an A. So that's the nice thing about the program that, that uh, you know, the, the leadership team of the school and Robert. Putting together now, every student is going to be aware, not only that, the um their educational interest, but as well as their career interest that goes hand in hand, you know, so.
So they're taking charge of their career interests.
Right.
I have to mention that this is actually in line with our philosophy.
That's right.
In our philosophy, we, when we updated before that predication, right, the whole team, all state holders. Agreed that our philosophy is that we make our students be accountable of their own learning.
Yeah.
And that's indicated in our philosophy, the one I got in charge.
That's right, that's right.
We're aligned with that.
I think when you go through your predication next year, uh having this program, Zello DI.
It's gonna be.
You have a fully functioning, you should be producing students at a stellar level of performance.
And this is the evidence that um Kanye is looking at because it's a hard output um and end product.
That's why, that's why I, I think all the more.
And you come up with the result as a man.
Yep, and it also satisfies the special education program where the school is required uh to help the students develop a four-year path. And this is really a something just but really it does, it's like a hand in the glove. Uh it, it really address the, even the students with special needs.
I've already connected with Volk Ed and Disit.
Right.
And met with those students. and met with those students, senior students.
I I'm excited to hear the.
So they'll be plugged in.
Where, where, how are we approaching on on the?
I appreciate the parents are gonna be so proud.
Yeah, I'm meeting with them, they're scheduling the parent meetings.
Yeah, that, let's, let's make sure that those.
Excellent.
Took up your lunch, uh, Madam Fay, the board members, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
I really enjoyed this presentation, it's really good.
No, so Mr. Chris, so we're meeting tomorrow, the two of us, and then on Thursday, we're going, we're looking at policies, uh, so the board can adopt the uh, the model. And then eventually, we're creating also the credits.
That'd be part of it also.
Right, that's part of the policy for the board's review and approval. Yes, we can be the first one to establish this.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's gonna have to be, it's gotta be on the resolution.
This is uncharted territory, we are blazing the trail.
Yeah, that's right. We haven't been able to put this down.
Don't blame him now.
Here are the other charter schools.
Fully adopt the resolution because this, this is all gonna be all.
Team effort.
Thank you so much.
So, hope you enjoyed it. Uh, there are any questions you have, please, give it to Anne and we will answer every question you have, okay? Just told you.
I'm telling you.
I'm very excited, Robert.
I'm not getting asked. And that's my conversation with Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
You guys are good.
I'm excited, you know?
We ate before we came.
What did you have?
Because came in uh, surgery.
Surgery, the laser, my teeth, and I don't know, I was, I think I, I ate my tongue and my cheek.
This is what I had in the building, I had obstruction, and it's hard to eat. The two of you, did that, get hungry, this food here.
Um, so number two part is human resource, filled positions and current vacant positions, Miss Jamie, take it away.
Since the last board meeting, we have no new filled positions.
What are the old position, is your HR position still open? She was the HR for, uh, it's a big company, uh, I I forgot her name, but she was HR for one of the big. I I I told her to apply online. Something like Garchtech. So I said, what's? But just go ahead, I'm sorry, HR is no, you don't have anything posted for your?
We still have.
For. Yeah, for the current vacant positions, it's still the same as was, far as um, it's the, that we reported the last time, the part-time bed teacher procurement officer, personnel officer is still open. Teacher, counselor, teacher assistant, and on-call substitute teacher. The personnel officer interviews are um, are ongoing, but Madam Fay, I'll talk to you. I'll talk to you later, but yes, whatever we do receive, we interview them.
Okay.
So, finance. Oh, thank you, Miss Jamie, RFP for programming, which is architectural and um, so just an update, we have a temper, uh, tentative schedule where the RF RFQ, so RFQ just for certification is request for qualification for engineering and architectural.
Is that already out?
So the tentative schedule that it will be out this November 30th. Um, that's it, what we can um, share with you, but this is definitely.
Only because you know, with with, with your exploring the Korean technical education here, you really need facility. You really need extra rooms to be able to know, to to not send your student out to be able to do those other things, where you can just do it within your own with your own facilities, so this is gonna be a big, it's not gonna happen next year, but keep in mind that as you get, as you get more heavy on your career, uh, Korean technical education, then you'll be needing because I I could imagine expansion of the role, I could imagine that you would be needing certain certain facilities to to even do some of the hands-on or clinicals or or laboratory that you'll be needing just to.
And these program books are, I'm sure we're gonna get a lot of.
But you know, uh, cinema has the, has done this, uh, cinema has different tracks right now. Uh, there, so I haven't been, because I do business with the P S S, they have a public school system starts at eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. I'm graduating nursing assistant there as early as twelfth grade.
So we started eighth grade instead of ninth.
Ten, eleven, twelve, so they graduated twelfth grade with U certification, right, so they're being hired way up again. Also, they also connected with the trade, they also connected with the hospital, so P S S is very aggressive. So, you know, when I talked to her about it, I said, you know, we gotta be able to to do this. I said, I don't know how to go, go into the, I don't know, but go on with it. Go on, see, that's why he's very good, so he's he's really kinda like, this is, this is really where where he could actively, because this is really where a lot of family can get help, not everybody can go to a full education or college or whatever, the money's just not there.
And he's trying to help them.
Yeah, so now he explains how, that's why I wasn't even surprised when he told, oh, no, you wanna go to certain, like you wanna go to the school. You just wanna get into the technical setting, so at the initial stage, I thought you have luggage two years, there is a wow, wanna be a doctor, can I be a doctor? I I didn't realize that early on, you already drafted in.
So you can even go to their app right away.
Okay, continue.
You you mentioned about RF.
Qualification.
Qualification or quotation?
No, qualification.
So, just like, we have to make sure that it's field compliant, the field score is the one that's making sure that
Yes.
um, in terms of engineering and um.
Field stands for professional engineering, architectural, something, something. P E A, P E A L S, the field's more, yeah.
So we are not looking for a postal yet because in our, our, our main focus is we have the right qualified individuals or firm
Yeah, we can do the selection.
Wow, it's like a multi-step bid. Uh, we have to make sure first that they qualify
Right.
before we can just give them, then then the, it's more of a negotiation based on interview uh, so that we're focusing on not getting the cheapest, but then after a while, the cheapest they will build you or they give you something that is not.
So it's connected to all.
Quality and their qualifications as a firm or as a consultant. And that's the reason why I, we really have to um, adjust the scope of work that we want from them, that is expected from them, it's not just regular, give us a give this um, a draft or schematics. It's very specialized, that's why it's programming, because they have to revisit whatever we have before and see based on our data and our current existing information is what do we need to adjust? Because before, if we have more middle school, if we have more high school, it's catered and um, specific to our programs that we offer, just like what Lunchtime said, it's more focused on CCR, elementary is more.
You're gonna, you're gonna be expanding it along.
Yeah.
Because the word could be out, just just give it above your spec elementary.
So, the next part, uh, it's there, I mean, there's only more.
Presenting for request.
Presenting, so we have like. Any more question on the RFQ for the program?
Just gonna launch it, hurry up, please.
So next one, I'll give it up to Miss.
We are, we are up to another, a new RFP for. Insurance, so this will be issued on November three and I'm trying to get it out, uh, finish the uh, the RFP by January. Because the current one is expiring February thirty-fourth. So this is, the RFP is being reviewed a little after right now, so hopefully, uh, we can issue it next year. So, audit, we had an entrance, um, meeting with O P A and Ernst and Young last Thursday. And Mr. Mijikus is really rushing us to finish the audit by the end of January, end of January or end of February.
So for the auditorium, it's gonna be one of your time, but the auditorium is a party, I'm not very excited.
Yeah, the auditor, so anyway, that, this is the GAN chart that we presented to uh, to O P A and O P A, so um, hopefully, this will go through, right, that the audit will start mid of the month. Yeah, so, uh, the 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 GAN chart is third week of March, but Mr. Mijikus said, uh, rush it to end February twenty-twenty.
Oh, she watches her hair.
Yeah, because there's a lot of, because there's only one, auditor right now, not one, but Ernst and Young is really, uh, uh, funding all the audit of the whole month, so they they want the charters to be done.
Company of your auditing company.
What about that, I want to first start out working.
That's why we planned for.
We went back to.
That's the, yeah, so, yeah, so.
Okay, okay, time, the old time. The the final deadline for audit conduct, it will take three months, approximately.
No, because that's the, that's the GAN chart, the normal GAN chart, but as I said, O P A wants it rushed.
Wants it earlier.
Yeah.
That's why I don't think, this is longer.
As long as the, the, okay, okay, we did, don't have to be.
More of a.
No, because it's more on Ernst and Young, uh, doing it not uh, not us, so.
As explained by Mr. that, uh, Mijikus, for Mijikus, O P A is giving a directive, not just to us, but to the auditors as well, E Y that you have.
He has many other agencies to to review.
So he's like saying, get out of your way.
Mijikus.
Okay, okay.
Okay, let's go.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
So new business personal matters, um, because we have personal matters to discuss and move to the executive session. Uh, we will end it.
Yeah, may, I can have a motion to recess, I mean, for a regular meeting, to the second session.
I seconded.
Okay, motion, uh, uh, from, Justice Rosie seconded by Trustee Akeza. And this move on to executive session. It is now as a time for executive.